Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. It's February 9th, 2016, 7 o'clock. Barstown City Council Meeting. And I guess I'll go ahead and recognize groups of individuals. And receive input from the public. And number three, we have no contracts, proposals, or service requests. And so we'll go down to number four, which is, which would be the HRB/DRB Planning Zone Recommendation for DRB 227. So Kathy, if you don't mind, would you read the recommendations?
Mm-hmm. DRB 227 Master Supply, 90 foot by 110 foot, 9,900 square feet showroom, office, and warehouse, Revise Lot Number Three, CGV Light Industrial Park. Today, the Development Review Board met and reviewed the site, building, landscaping, and lighting plans for the above referenced development. The DRB recommended approval of the submitted building site, landscaping, and lighting plans with conditions specified in the DRB minutes.
Everybody had a chance to look at that and look that over? If you have, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, if I'm in order. I move to accept the Development Review Board's recommendation of approval for DRB number 227, with all the conditions set forth and any restrictions. And I yield a floor for a second.
I'll second that.
I'll second Mr. Simpson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? As favor, motion's adopted. Okay. We go to our correspondence. Barstown City Schools/WHAS Crusade for Children.
Mayor, if I could let you know that I am going to recuse myself from any vote or discussion, but I will remain in the chamber. I've already asked attorneys to abstain.
No, no, that's better than that.
Mayor, ten, I forget. Does this require some approval by the City Council?
Uh, I believe so.
Okay. But that's fine. With that being the case, I make the motion to approve the request of Barstown City Schools for the 5K run.
Uh, and I don't mind if you say it, but I think since you abstained, if the majority of the vote, your vote still counts as a majority. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. But he just abstained because of his relationship with the school.
Right. Fred has a motion on the floor to approve the 5K run on 8/27/2016.
Second.
Second by Councilman Copeland. Discussion. Motion is to approve the 5K run on 8/27/2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes in favor. One abstain. Councilman Williams abstain. Motion's adopted. Let's do the Bluegrass Christian Academy 5K Run. There's gonna be a lot of skinny people in Barstown. Bluegrass Christian Academy 5K Run on 4/23/2016. I entertain the motion to approve. Motion by Councilman Simpson. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Copeland. All in favor? Or correction, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's adopted. Thank you. We'll move to the Nelson County Airport. Mr. Jerry Rocha will present the updates. If you haven't had a chance to get out there and take a look at the airport, at the updates, and the things that's happened, it's amazing what goes on out there. I would say the airport is a little hidden treasure of the, I guess, of Nelson County and the city of Barstown has. You have your meetings when?
We're just changing. They're gonna be the first Wednesday of each month. The next month it'll be the second Wednesday. Mike Forsen in town.
Yeah. If you need some help with technology, just let me know.
All right. I came early to the critters. Sort of thing. I might want to be over here, but I'm gonna have more of my screen shining in my office.
If it's gonna come off my head, that might be too destructive.
Here, you want me to talk?
This is the best we've, we're able to figure out. Bear with me, that black area is where everything's supposed to be. The Barstown Airport's out Highway 62, just on the other side of the bridge, past Dunfield. And we're all encouraged to come out. I wanna talk to you about the board.
Do you want to put next, so you can send it up?
No, that's all right. I'll be in the way. The airport board's comprised of six members. Three are chosen by the mayor, and three are chosen by the county judge executive. And I think it's three-year terms. I'm not really sure. But every two or three years, somebody says, "Your time's up," and we have to go through that again. I'm the chairman, which just shows what happens if you doze off just for a minute. Terry Gohegan's been there forever. He's the vice chairman. David Snuggeland has a plan at the airport. Jim Shaver, Jim Nelson, and Walt Norton are the last three members. Those three, and myself, all are retired military aviators. And the other two are strap hangers. They just like to be around planes. We all realize as retired aviators that we weren't gonna do any work, so we need to find somebody to do the work for us. And we've hired Mike Forsen. Most of you at the city will remember, Mike's been working for us at the airport for 18 years. His time was freely donated by the city. We really appreciate that until he retired. But he was such a value to us, we went and hired him. And he now works out there two or three hours every morning to keep up with the bills and paperwork and stuff. I've heard people call him Mr. Airport. We try not to do that, 'cause he's got a big head already. And Mike would be here tonight, except whenever it snows, he goes to Panama. So he's on a beach in Panama and getting ready to go to Peru and be back there in about a month. But he's just a tremendous amount of help with everything at the airport. Where were you all in 1963? Those of you that are rounding 63. That's usually an easy question to ask, 'cause everybody remembers where they were when Kennedy was killed. But what was going on here in Barstown was a group of civic leaders. If you look in the, right about in the middle of this, it says EB Samuel, Secretary Treasurer. He was probably driving all this. But the city council and everybody got together and talked with the state, and the state worked with federal government, and they got funding to build the airport. So our airport here was probably conceived in 1601 or so, but it was actually constructed and finished in 1963. When they did it, they did this, believe it or not, on $250,000. And in the lower right-hand picture, right about there, you'll see our terminal building. And that was built by local, by donations from local businesses, 12,000, five hundred. Or 12,000 plus $500 worth of furniture, or something like that. Here's that building now. It's kind of iconic for the big chrome "Barstown" written up on the side of it. And a lot of airports have gotten new buildings. And we haven't chose to get another one. We just haven't given any money to build a new one. So we still have it. However, it's no longer our terminal. It's now where we have our offices. We bought the old chairs from this room and moved them out to this, where we have our board meetings and Mike's office. A lot of people still walk through there, and that's been problematic, 'cause it's right out in the middle of everything. We've made some improvements over the year. Originally, the airport was 3,200 feet long, didn't have taxiways, didn't have lights. Taxiwears were built. It was at four, 800 feet were added to the distant end, the north end, many years ago. They brought it up to 4,000 feet. And about 10 years ago, we added another 1,000 feet to bring it up to 5,003. That's three pence important. If they find out it's 4,999, it changes your old class of airport and everything. So you always gotta make it just a hair above 5,000. It handles jet aircraft well, as long as you don't get too big. And a big aircraft can come in here, as long as it doesn't have too much fuel and too many passengers. And they can make it in, but sometimes they can't make it out. But normal corporate jet traffic that would come here generally fits this airport just They painted the airport, see the left-hand picture, several years ago, probably about The state paid to have all their runways seal-coated and cracks filled and paint them all up and rip it on ice, but they must've used watercolors, 'cause next year it looked about like the right picture. And so we were back up to trying to do that again this year. The state was anxious to do it, but we found so many cracks and things in the runway. And, you know, we almost have to mow it for the weeds that grow up in it. And so the plan is now to put a whole new asphalt surface on top of it. That'll strengthen the runway, too. We'll put about two inches of asphalt, plus from a device called GeoGrid in it that'll make it the equivalent of four to six inches of asphalt. And we can, that can handle the weight of heavier planes later. We can take heavy airplanes, if they do it routinely, it'll tear up the pavement, so this'll strengthen. Here's some numbers. Our runway is 5,000 feet, 75 feet. We have three instrument approaches to come in here in bad weather, clouds involved. We have six hangars, and we hope to have three more in the near future. There's at least 40 aircraft here. It keeps changing. They keep taking off and coming back. Can't go out there and just count it one time and go. But we have over 10,000 takeoff and landings per year. We have capacity for 20,000 gallons of fuel. Half of that Jet A and half of it gasoline, 100, roll that as the aviation gasoline. It's 100 octane. Every now and then, people with fancy cars come out here and buy a few gallons, put it in to drive the car around. It's expensive. It's about...
$4.73.
$4.73 a gallon. We have one aviation maintenance facility, an avionics facility, and a fixed base operator, who is Corey Johnson, that just answered my last question. We've contracted with him to manage our airport for us for the next five years. He has a couple of corporate planes here and maintains all our hangars and collects all the money from the people who rent hangar space and takes care of all the fuel problems for us. And we got 114 acres of land. And I asked Mike Forsen that one time. I said, "Mike, how do you know it's 114?" And he says, "I know." Sometimes it's bitter cold, and that causes problems. Sometimes it's just busy on a nice sunny day. Flower Food came here one time and had people flying from everywhere, and it really busied up the airport. So you never know when you're gonna be busy. So it's hard to have everything ready for a bunch of stuff going on, and that's a natural. But that's the nature of an airport. Snow clearing's been a problem. Last year, you know, the big snows we had were just, it cost us $6,000 to $7,000 to get the airport cleared. And the work really inadequate. The people around here use cleaning parking lots and pile the snow up at the end, pile it up at the end of the runway. And we can't have that, with planes coming in and just have to be a little bit low on its wings at it, or the wheels at it. That'll ruin the day. And we've asked them not to put it there, but by the time it gets out, the guy in a truck, he doesn't know. And he's doing what his pickup truck can do, and so it became a problem. So you see in the lower-left picture there, it's Philcon Construction's road grave. And they came out and did a lot of cleanup after. We'd already paid several thousand dollars to have it done. People worked for three or four hours and leave at four in the morning, and you come in and say, "We can't use this." And so Philcon has a plane there, they know what needs to be done, and they came and did it. That's pretty rough on the pavement. You'll see the right-hand picture is what happened after last year's winter. We pulled a plane out and it fell through the pavement. It turns out that pavement originally was about two inches thick of asphalt on clay. But over the years, that was about 40-year-old pavement, so... In a moment of just very good timing, I called the state and told them about it, and they said, "Oh, that's a big safety issue." And they volunteered $400,000 for 100% payment. That's why you haven't heard about it before, we didn't come in and chew up some money because the state ran that, paid 100% of that job. We finished that in October this year. So the recent projects and things we have coming up, with the $400,000 ramp rehabilitation that the state just did for us. Incidentally, after the snow last week, they used the grader again, and it scraped up all that new asphalt. And it's got scratches on it and stuff, and so I had to say, "All right, don't use the grader." You know, we didn't notice it when the asphalt was old, but now that we've got brand-new stuff, we're seeing what the damage does. We hope to have a new privately funded corporate hangar, 'cause two or three people have to talk and get together and decide that's really what they wanna do. But we've reserved a spot for them. It'll be about 10,000 square feet, and we hope they're building that. And they'd like to have it done by the end of March. So if it's done by summer of 2016, we'll be in good shape. A lot of people gotta make decisions first. We're also looking to build eight more hangars. These are nested hangars, where your back plane's in, and they call them T-hangers, so you can open it from the same, from both sides. And I show that it's 80% self-funded. We've talked to the Kentucky Association of Counties. They're willing to give us money for it. I don't know whether they gotta have a down payment, or whether they'll fund the whole thing. I'm just not sure how it works out. There's a lot of talking still to be done on that. But we've got nine users waiting for places, but we don't have room to put a nine aircraft T-hanger. So we're gonna build as big as we can. Anyhow, there's a, right now, we have a current project on that's extending the overrun north into the airport. It's 200 feet long. It's supposedly 300. And so that's going on right now. We're just waiting for good weather and stuff to finish that project. The runway overlay next year could be as much as $1.5 million. That, you know, they said 1.2 feet. "Oh, you want new runway lights, too?" And our lights are 40 years old. They're blowing bolts like crazy. The LED lights are so much better now and take so much less power that while they're doing the runway, they might as well put in new lights. So we're hoping to do that, and that may run up to maybe 1.4 feet. But it could be 1.5. I've just used that as a nice figure to calculate from. So at some time, we're gonna start this project issue of the design of it and things like that, but somewhere along the line, the FAA will fund that about, I don't know the exact figures, but it turns out that 5% of the money, or maybe 2.5% of the money, that's why I wish Mike were here, is local funds. So we would be hitting the city and the county up for $75,000 between the two of them. So it's 37.5 if it was a 1.5 million dollar project. So that's part of the reason I'm here tonight, just gotta tell you that someday, sometime, I got something going on. A mile of runway for 1.5 million sounds expensive, but we're putting about two inches of asphalt on there and some reinforcement underneath it and doing all the lights. And you can't believe all the things you have to do to make it, to be able to do it, to meet FAA standards. So it's an expensive option, but a mile of road will take you a mile. A mile of runway will take you anywhere. So it's a good investment. And that's a lot of money coming into the county. So for the small 37,500, if that's what it comes to be for me, to get the federal government to give us the rest of the 1.5, that's a good deal. We made some smaller improvements. These are some first lights that we have to help guide planes in at the right angle. They had, since 1988, birds have been sitting on them, nesting and things like that, and they were really incredible. We cleaned them up, took it to a local body shop, and I wanna congratulate Mr. Lydia for putting that nice enamel paint job on it. It looks so much nicer. I wish the, I wish the lighting were better right now. But it's something, you see it 100 mile an hour when you come in and land, you go past it, but it just looks good. And so we're trying to make the airport look good. We are the prettiest small town in the United States, so what can we do about it? So our terminal building that we've, that we no longer use as a terminal building, now that activity happens over here in the FBO's, right under his officer on the second floor. We have a lounge area below it and a kitchen area in the back, a couple of shards of pilots and things like that while their passengers are off doing things. And so we spruce this up this year. You see a porch there in the middle, or just the right side of the middle? That used to just be a flat metal door on the side of a metal hangar. It wasn't very inviting. So we put that in to help people get, passengers have to come through here, and, you know, if they're all running up and it's raining or something like, at least while they're going through the door, they're not stuck outside in the rain. So it looks a whole lot nicer. Here's the inside. We took, put those windows in there to make the room look larger, also create a hallway that took you around, which you used to have to go in the hangar to get back into the kitchen. Now people go there without having to go inside the hangar, get around other pieces of aircraft. So we made some, a lot of nice improvements. That was all funded by the airport itself, from what we make off our hangar rails and fuel cells. So that's what you see when you, when you come in. That little cloud up in the sky, that's where, that's where Corey's offices are. We say he's got all his data in the cloud, but his wife says he's got his head in the clouds. Is that right?
It is.
Put a new sign out front. Really looks kinda nice when you come to the airport. There it is, as you're approaching. Our old terminal building on the left with the FBO on the right. So it's a really pretty airport. I've been to almost every airport in the state, and this is, this is up in the top five or six. And that doesn't mean anything if you don't have everything that's working right. So we stay busy trying to, trying to get trees cleared and things. We spent $58,000 last year making sure we weren't gonna bother any bats. And we haven't got the trees cut yet, but the bats are safe. Our role is to provide for safe and efficient global air traffic, intense business and industrial flights to and from Nelson County, and facilitate local pilots and owners. And promote aviation, excite expiring youth. And I'll try to tell you a quick story about Corey. Eight years ago, he was hanging on the chain link fence, just looking at planes. You were working for UPS at the time. And somebody stepped outside and, "Wait, there's a man. I just wish I could fly." And the guy said, "Well, we could work something behind you, so I don't have to fly." And it turns out, we do a lot of trading and work and stuff. I think he and his wife helped a guy clean up a house that he was getting ready to sell and other things. He got his time and learned to fly, and here he is, eight years later, running the place. There's a lot of talent in this town, and here's a whole field that couldn't be important to somebody, but we got people here in town that don't even know we have an airport. So we're trying to change that. And we recognize that our position is a very important doormat to influential people who come to visit Barstown, that flowers attend.
Question about that bullet right there. Why do you consider yourself a doormat?
Well, when people come to town, they get out of their plane, they get out on the airport, come into Barstown. So I thought, "Where's the doormat at Barstown?" This is, I don't know, it seemed like a thing to say when I wrote that sentence. Don't read too much into it. The Central Airport Bureau has offices here, and that's where a lot of people do get impressed with aviation, get an opportunity. That's run by Jim Nelson, one of our board members. We also have a little old sorrel club here. And I'm sure you've heard the planes pulling gliders up and see them fly over town, every now and then. They've got a bunch of them stuffed in that one hangar there. And the ones that can't fit in that hangar, they got their trailers down here at the north end of our ramp, in the lower-left picture. And right on the lower-right picture is our fuel farm, sits right next to their hangar. The only bad thing, no, not the only thing, bad thing, but one of the bad things about gliders, they don't use much fuel. And that's where we get our money. And, but we tolerate them, because every time a glider takes off, and everybody has to pull up near, it doesn't use much fuel either. But then they don't go to say, "Look," they come back here. And so that was a count of four. When a guy wants to go on one flight, we get four takeoff and landings. Those takeoff and landings, back there above 10,000, opens the door for more funding from us from the FAA. And so we tolerate the glider program, and it pays off for us. We've had several events go on here in 2012, we had a down-down convention, that's what that picture is. In 2013, we had a Sesa 170 convention. 2014, the 99ers came. The 99ers is a flying organization of women. And so they had the nationwide convention here in 14, and the state of Kentucky came back in 2015. And they liked it so much, they're coming back again. They're coming in September, and it's gonna be in conjunction with the Urban Festival. And so it's, anyhow, we got great facilities. People really like to come. They fill up a lot of hotels, they eat at a lot of restaurants. And we've got 40 planes, so I would say probably 80 to 100 people come from each one of those, or maybe more. So that's Barstown Field. We've got this nice little sign. It's electric, shows up at night. But you know what we don't have? Is one of these signs. And we think when people fly in, they're coming into town, you drive out, you're about to turn left on 62 to come into town, you gotta sit there and wait for traffic. Wouldn't it be nice when you turn left and look, you see a sign like this? So we're willing to loan some land to whoever would like to put all these signs up. And we think that would be a nice compliment to the airport. Not a lot of people from out of town come into town on Boston Road, except local people. But everybody comes in the airport. It'd be a good, a good place to have that sign, so somebody could see it. We're really proud of being the...
And we're working on that. It's hit close a bunch of times, so we're working on that.
Right. So that's the Barstown Airport. Please come down to visit. And anytime in the mornings, after about the second week of Barstown, when Mike Forsen's back, he's usually out there in the morning or scheduled something with either Corey or myself. That's what we're doing. That's how we get our funding. The federal government pays quite a bit, the state shifts in a little bit, and the local pays what I'll call a meter amount, but we got some big, big issues coming up here next year. One of them is, we probably need a new tractor with some way to pick up snow and move it when somebody does all that, and they leave something in the wrong spot. We gotta go around and hunt for somebody to call it. And they come in over-equipped. But our tractor's two-wheel drive and just doesn't have the right stuff to it, and our mower's starting to break. So we may hitch up for some small coins and a few things like that on occasions, but we're hoping, and we're really proud of how much we've been able to do without having to ask for money. Y'all pay us $400 a month, each city and county, which doesn't even meet our payroll, but we've been able to live with those funds, and we hope to keep it that way. Thank y'all very much. Any questions?
I have a question, Jerry. Is the largest plane that is allowed to land on an airstrip or runway, or whatever you call it?
The runway is limited to a load bearing of 18,000 feet, 18,000 pounds for a single-axle aircraft, and I think 54,000 pounds for one with tandem. What's that mean?
I don't know. I'm talking on my head.
The, but the decision is up to the pilot.
Oh, boy.
And if he comes in on a plane that's heavy and that tears up a runway, then it's up to us to complain about it.
Oh, I see. It would tear.
But the pilot's supposed to operate within those limits. We've had a Gulfstream Five, which is a pretty impressive aircraft. They've had newer ones out now. I think they've changed the numbers. Ruckheimer came in here in a Gulfstream Four one time. And we talked about that. He was interested in building a hangar, and we were interested in doing that. But before the conversation went very far, he bought a Gulfstream Five, and it's just too big to operate out here routinely. They can come to land occasionally, but if it's gonna be a routine thing, then it needs to be a smaller aircraft than that. A Gulfstream is, can carry up to 19 passengers. But we have planes who come in here, operating at their limit if they don't have a full load of fuel and stuff. What, the Hawker 800 series?
Yeah, that can do directly.
And that seats, what, about 12 people if you have a bunch of seats in it. Most of them are a little more sparsely, and they got cool interiors with sick people that. But that's your typical corporate aircraft to make it, but the bigger ones, Trump couldn't come in here with his 757. The air guard could, you know, they can land in a dirt field in a C-130, but it'd tear up our runway. If it tears up a dirt field, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
A good way to think about it is just a 30-passenger plane, roughly. If you were on a commercial airliner, a 30-passenger commercial airliner is about the largest thing that could land there safely.
Okay. Thank you. Jerry, Francis asked my question. I have another one. Well, I have a suggestion. On your slide, I would change that from doormat to welcome mat.
Okay. That's good. I don't know if I ever will see this silly, but I'll do that. I'll do that. That might be one for the cannon. It'll be there. Thank you. You'll have to get this out. We're going to let this cool off.
Okay, we'll move forward. Uh, we'll go to the review of the minutes, the city council minutes of one twenty-six, two thousand sixteen. Hopefully everyone had a chance to review the minutes. So if there's, uh, no, uh, I lost my train of thought. If there's no objection, I'll adopt a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, one twenty-six, two thousand sixteen. Since there's no objections, I'll adopt a motion for unanimous consent. Thank you, guys. Uh, financial report, there's nothing there.
If I could make a comment?
Sure.
Uh, I, I called the mayor, what, last week? And, uh, he said he's going to start getting together some financials so that we can start looking at the budget as soon as the department head gets their numbers together.
As soon as, uh, as soon as we get things together, you know, it says you're right. Yeah, I'll get it to you. So. It's a lot of things to, to compile this year. Uh, reports from staff and committee. No, I'm sorry. I jumped away here then. Now ordinances. First reading of ordinance B two thousand sixteen, Classification Compensation Plan Amendments. I guess, Peggy?
Summary of ordinance B two zero one six, Classification and Compensation Plan. This ordinance amends ordinance B two zero one five dash sixteen and chapter thirty-five, Employment Policies. The Classification Plan and Compensation Plan by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade for all non-exempt employees of the city's fire department, and a new part-time position as a media specialist for the electric and cable department, excuse me, electric, cable and TV department for fiscal year two thousand fifteen and sixteen and subsequent years. The amendments and additions reflecting number of positions, title and pay grade respectively are strike one firefighter supervisor, grade one fifteen, one firefighter building inspector, grade one ten, one firefighter department clerk, grade one ten, one firefighter department maintenance, grade one oh nine, twelve firefighter, grade one oh seven, and firefighter twenty-four forty-eight, grade one oh seven, insert one major assistant fire chief, grade one sixteen, one captain fire marshal, grade one twelve, one lieutenant training, grade one oh nine, three lieutenant shift commander, grade one oh nine, ten total positions for firefighter EMT, grade one oh seven, firefighter recruit, grade one oh six, strike six, insert seven, part, firefighter part-time, strike one oh seven, insert grade one oh six, and one media specialist part-time, grade one oh nine. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as requested by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
Okay, we want to, just go to... Excuse me, Mayor. It's the council enforcement board meeting.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about the...
Absolutely.
About the, just, uh, I talked to Larry about this. I guess just for clarification, this revised classification compensation plan, uh, is the, it's kind of a follow-up to what we talked about some months ago. And these new positions and, uh, grades have been reviewed by Paul Combs and, uh, so that the grades reflect the, the new job descriptions of these positions from, from the Paul Combs study.
So he didn't, he reviewed the, uh, the job descriptions that these came from. And these correspond to job descriptions that he reviewed.
Yes.
But then the, uh, the chief adapted a little bit to what he wanted them in and mainly renamed them.
Yeah.
The way he wanted them.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, uh, under reports and staff or committees, there's a special cemetery committee meeting scheduled, uh, February seventeenth at eight-thirty in the, in the mayor's conference room at City Hall. And, uh, the, give a report on the code enforcement board had their first meeting and, uh, I guess elected their chairman, which was, uh, February fourth. Uh, everybody had a chance to look over that. If there's any questions, I'll, I'll be sure to, I'll try to answer that. No questions? Okay. Uh, let's go to, uh, I'll start with, uh, Larry, do you have anything? Larry G?
No, sir.
Larry H? Okay. Uh, Chief, Fire Chief?
No, uh, just, uh, I went to the, uh, town one board meeting today. There wasn't a lot of action that took place. As far as, there was some discussion of the budget they need to submit by the local agreement, but there was really not any action taken.
Thank you for going. I missed it. Darn. Um, no, very quickly, uh, just two things that we, if you saw on our Facebook, we're participating in the Flint Water Drive that started locally. Councilman Copeland contacted us and Greg up at Oil Express and some people, I think they're all involved. So we're, we're challenging that. Um, it was on our Facebook page today. I think we're up to about a hundred and eighty cases of water just among our four platoons. Uh, my challenge to our four platoons internally was whoever comes in with the most water, I'm buying lunch out of my pocket. And, um, it looks like we've got, the one platoon alone gave up with a hundred and eighty cases of water. So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to fork out some cash for long. We do have one, um, new officer that'll be joining us, uh, at the end of the month. A lateral to backfill a vacancy. And, uh, we'll probably have more on him coming up towards the end of the month. Of course, he'll, he'll come before you all once he gets on board for the, for the mayor to swear amen and welcome him. And we do have a, a retirement, uh, coming up. Um, after about twenty-seven years, Major Lewis is, is, is retiring. He'll be leaving this spring. Um, I'm not supposed to tell anybody that, so I apologize. I thank too much of him and respect him that I'm not going to let him just sneak out of here quietly. So yes, Major Ray Lewis is retiring. More to come on that, too. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Little thing on the, I did on the water. There is a, uh, trucking company, not global, that is going to truck this water to Flint for free. So I contacted today about that. So anybody that has water, they'll, they're going to arrive to the state of Kentucky and they're going to put it all on there. So I added that to the list. They might stop in front of yours and set a lot of it up, so.
Chief, if, if one wanted to donate a case of water to, to your effort, where would you, where would you take it?
His office?
On your doorstep?
Uh, no, if you come by, bring it to the police department any, anytime. Or if it's out on the beat, I don't have a problem with our officer stopping by as long as it's, you know, within the city and picking it up. I think that's, uh, that's, we've had some of our businesses he actually kicked in, too. So.
Yeah, he's, uh, his office is exciting. You should see it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He's got his own little water fort.
I, uh, I, one of the officers, just what the mayor's talking about is, he said, "I've got some water. I'm going to donate. Where should I put the cases?" And I said, "We'll just set it in my office. That way it's out of way." And I'm thinking five, ten cases of water. So he texts me back and said, "Are you sure you want it in your office?" And I said, "Yeah, go ahead." So I get there this morning and that's the video that's on Facebook. There's a hundred and eighty cases of water. And I have a walkway into my office and around to my desk. And I'm sitting at my desk, I can't even see out because I said, if a, if a shooter comes in, I'm going to drown a little longer for us. And I, I get hit by a bullet. So, but we'll, we'll accept it, Captain Nagy. Anything you've got, we'll even come get it.
Yeah, of course Greg, I think collected several, uh, cases from, uh, the administration and, and employees. Greg got that together, done a few cases, so. Uh, Bobby, you have anything? Do me.
I mean, uh, Mayor, I think it was, it's been some months ago, I think I, I discussed with you and I discussed with the council. And you indicated you was going to contact Department of Transportation and revisit that congestion era that we have down on sixty-two and third one E. You remember when you said that you were contacting Department of Transportation and you were going to get back with me? You remember?
We've been, I think we've discussed that. I've been on since two thousand five, that intersection where, right in front of St. Joe Church?
Well, yes. Well, you know, I brought it to the council and we had a committee meeting. And we had a recommendation. And you indicated you was going to call Department of Transportation. Maybe they can revisit that era fresh, that peak arrows, you know, when school going on. And it's a mess in the morning, morning and afternoon. It's very dangerous.
Dangerous.
I know it is. And I think we need to do something about it.
Well, right now, the state, of course, with the new governor is working over a new budget. And that is, uh, according to the, uh, E-Town Department there, I guess, where the state is. That's not really right on a priority right now. And they visit, we've, you know, we've visited probably that situation half a dozen times since I've been here in office with you. We've, at one point in time, there was a discussion of moving that around.
But you made me a promise that you was going...
I did.
Oh, okay.
I'm telling you, there's nothing, they're not going to do nothing. It's, it, that's a state highway. And I checked in on it. I'm telling you, there's nothing that, it's a new governor, he's going over the budget. There's nothing. It's a state issue. So I can't, I can't do anything.
I mean, whatever his philosophy is, his philosophy is more important than someone getting hurt, some little kid walking across the street or dusted something. So it's more important.
You've gone in his head deeper than I have. I don't have any idea. I'm not a psychologist. I can't do anything. So anyway, let's move along. Unfinished business. All right, Mr. Copeland?
Yes, thank you. Um, I do have a couple of things. Um, I would like to say thank you to Chief McCubbins for, uh, when I called you and you didn't even think twice about it, you just said yes. And, um, you guys have went above and beyond for our challenge. And what it is, is it is the Flint Water Challenge. And it was initiated by two young gentlemen here in town, um, with the same thinking that most that wanted to do something for the community. And, um, I came in on the background, doing the background work, uh, calling people and things of that nature, coordinating things. And, um, the community has been overwhelmingly, um, supportive as well as outside communities. Marion County, Washington County, we have as far as Maysville. We have, uh, Humana Care Source. We have E-Town, uh, Elizabeth Town College. So, I mean, everyone has really, uh, stepped up and showed out on this Flint Water Challenge. And we truly appreciate you. I mean, you guys got like seven hundred hits in a matter of minutes. And so it, it just went really crazy after that. So thank you so much. We greatly appreciate it. Um, we have been donated two trucks. So those trucks will leave, uh, February twenty-sixth. And we will, uh, issue out, uh, water on the twenty-seventh. And we are in contact with the city government of Flint. Also, Enterprise is also helping with the, um, initiation and deliverance of the water. So this has been a well-thought-out process. And, um, we're still receiving calls and everything for this. So, but thank you because, um, it, it's a selfless act that you did when you just immediately said, "What, what can I do?" So it just shows your character and how much you care for your community and other communities as well. So I, I just want to say thank you again. Um, also, um, the last meeting, we had, uh, Martin Luther King. And I'd just like to thank everyone that came to the Martin Luther King event. Thank you so much. And also, one more thing, um, I was able to meet with, uh, Craig Potts. I went to a visit with the lieutenant governor for the Coalition of Domestic Violence, um, that now I'm a member of. And, um, it was an awesome meeting. And I was able to represent my city. So it was really great. But also I met with Craig Potts. I mean, Craig Potts is the executive director for the Heritage Council of Kentucky. And, um, so he has asked that I attend the National Preservation Conference and be a Kentucky delegate. And so I would like the council to think about proving the expenditure, um, from the council's contingency fund for me to attend that in Washington DC on March the eighth through the eleventh. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, there was a, is the council finished there? No one else? There was a meeting that was held on the, I guess, the Human Rights Commission had a meeting. And, uh, they had submitted their budget and it bounced out with, uh, with, through their expenses, it bounced out with zero. We've had that, you know, that's kind of what they've done every, every year. But, uh, through reading the, uh, listening to the minutes and reading the, on the Gazette there, uh, lo and behold, we have a surplus of five thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents on that budget. And it's not anywhere listed on this budget. And I think that is, uh, inappropriate type of budget because it should be listed if it's a surplus. And the balance should not be just, uh, the total income is five thousand, I mean, uh, total income is, uh, zero. So I'm going to ask the Human Rights Commission to rework that budget and show that they do have a surplus. And I've never known the Human Rights Commission to have a surplus. It's, uh, when submitted a budget, it should be in that. So I'm going to ask them to rework the budget and resubmit it. The other note on the, on the Human Rights Commission is I do not think that it is, which I will talk to them about this, but I do not think it is appropriate for they, for them to give this donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the, uh, Flint, Michigan, help, uh, you know, I know they, uh, Flint, Michigan is in dire need, dire straits up there. I understand that. But after reading, uh, some of their, some of the, um, the ordinances, I think that that is, uh, Human Rights Commission was set up to help, uh, the Bardstown Nelson County residents. And I think that that's where it should stay. But if the board members or any of the people want to give individually, they can to meet that two hundred and fifty, but I don't think it is, uh, I don't think it's proper to do that with the money here. And if you look at the ordinances, there are some that it says it is for the, uh, city of Bardstown and county, uh, people. So.
I may make a comment. I mean, you, you have an opinion, but we have a city attorney. I mean, I know, none was sent here. We not no attorney, without one attorney. Was it legal? I'm going to ask the city attorney.
Well, the, um, I was called by the one member after the fact. And, um, it, he asked if it was a, appropriate use of public funds, in my opinion. And first thing I asked was how are they funded? And, uh, he indicated that they're funded primarily through, um, contributions from city government. So it's public funds, city and county governments, public funds. But they have some private donations. And obviously, if it's private donations, they have the right to do something with the private donations. If it's public funds, um, same thing that we've, I've told you, I told them the exact same thing I told you all here, that it has to be for a public purpose. Um, and that it has to benefit the, the general population. Uh, when you read the literature on it, it talks about the general population of this area. Uh, and that it has to be something that they can control, that they have control over. Um, and so with all those things in mind, uh, my advice to them, had they asked me beforehand, my advice would have been no, that that's not something, uh, that they could use public funds for, but if they have private contributions or if they want, obviously if they want to make individual, I mean, there's no problem with that.
The mayor's a person. You indicated public funds. Okay. Let me drop some. Figure of that. Five percent, ten percent, fifty percent, or seventy-five percent. What percent are you talking about? If they, is it public funds, what percent will it have to be before it'll be, uh, arbitrated? You understand what I'm saying?
No public funds should be used.
I mean, okay, since like the city maybe contributes ten percent, maybe five percent. I mean, okay, just like the city maybe contribute 10% and maybe 5%. Just because it's 5%, it will still be a conflict of interest with that 5%? You understand what I'm saying?
I think so. If you're saying that, let's say their budget's, and I'm not trying to make this simple math for me.
Right, okay.
Let's say their budget is $100 and the city contributes $5. And the county contributes $5, so $10, $10 out of their 100, those $10 shouldn't be used for, you know, should be used for public purpose. My understanding is, is that they are, that they are overwhelmingly funded by the city and the county, like, maybe more like 95%.
Right.
Again, I don't know. I was doing this after the fact.
Sure.
But if there are, if there are private contributions or, again, if their members want to contribute, I think that they handled that pretty well. They said, you know, if this is not gonna be appropriate, we can cover it through private, you know, donations by the membership.
I mean, just to kick it around, that's where it ended. And the public funds and private donation, they could give a percent out of their private donation that would not have no effect on the county or the city?
Well...
You understand what I'm saying?
Well, first of all, one of the confusing things about this is that I'm not necessarily their lawyer.
Right.
Although, you know, it's a joint board and sometimes the county attorney, sometimes I represent them, but they are, they answered, they will have to answer to us and to other public entities for the, for the use of public funds.
Right.
And if there are, so if there are private funds, and so they'd have to segregate those funds and designate it, or it would come under the criteria that I mentioned.
Okay. May I speak to that?
Let me answer that question for you, Frances. If you look at the, the financial report, 2014, 2015, and look under the income, it'll say city appropriation, county appropriation, they're $1,500 apiece. Total amount of $3,000. So then if you go down right underneath that, it says member donation, zero. Outside donation, zero. Other income is zero and total expenditures is $3,000 and it was zero. So the $1,500 that the city gives, the $1,500 that the county gives is public, is not public donation. That's public, no, it's taxpayers' money.
Self-splinter, that.
Right. So there is no public donations in this human rights, private donations. It's public money, public taxpayers' money.
Well, I understand. It's self-splinter.
So if you, if you wanna read, if you wanna read that, and you can read it under chapter 37, the city-county...
It's redibility, really, if it's 50.
City-county commissions, and look at 37.11, look at the policy, and it basically says it's part of the public policy of the city and county to promote fair, then it goes treatment of equality of all persons regardless and all this, and it goes down and it says, "To protect the interests of personal dignity, freedom from humiliation, to make available to city and county fair." So that's, that's meaning city and county people. So I'm gonna question it and I'm, and I'm gonna send this budget back to them. I do not think that it is a proper budget and it's, the surplus is, appears to be, it's not on the budget, it's hidden, and I don't, I don't like it, I want it out. I want it made public.
I have to say that.
I don't know how it's come, and how far it's gone and where the money's come from. Go ahead.
Thank you. As soon as they found out from the city attorney that that was not allowed, the director or chairperson, Kathy Reed, went ahead and stated that they would go ahead and pledge the amount, but then they upped it to pledge to 1,000. So there's like 10 members or what have you, so they would all do it on their own. And they had set that in the minutes and on the recording that they would meet those donations if that wasn't allowed. Mike Yaden, Kathy Reed, Paula Page, many of them had stated that they would, you know, take those funds out of their pocket. And that's, that's reasonable in the bylaws. It states that it's for city and county usage. So they went ahead and immediately corrected that. So I just want that noted, please.
Very good. Moving along. And I'll get your answer on this budget as soon as I contact Ms. Reed and the other board members. We'll relook at that issue. Reports from the Cemetery Committee on 2/17/2016. What am I? Code enforcement board? I have got to where my wife is this campaign. New business is a little left there, right?
Unfinished business?
Unfinished business.
Nothing to add there.
Yeah, nothing there. If you read, if you read that, any unfinished business, you got the N-2016-03, the sanitary sewer service policy. We'll discuss that in February the 23rd meeting. New business, a resolution, R-2016-01, Cobec Remodeling Funds. Mr. Greg Ashworth?
Yes, sir. This is just the resolution that goes along with the grant money that we're applying for the area development funds, $3,674.29. This is, we have to get this resolution signed and we have to get the mayor's signatures of all the incorporated cities and I'm done with that paperwork and be ready to send it off. And that's all this is.
So this is, instead of 20,000, it's gonna be 9,900?
No, sir. The grant paperwork, you're not allowed to list all, it's 23,000 actually, and I'm not allowed to list all the stuff that's going on. You can only list what you have bids for, and that 9,900 is the flooring bid. And we're gonna use all $3,600 of the grant money towards that flooring bid, so there was no other reasons to submit, you know, $20,000 worth of bids because it wouldn't be used towards that. It would only be used towards that one. So on the grant paperwork, you can only list what you have a, you know, official bid for, and that was from the flooring, and that's why it's on that, on that floor. I had it 20, I had it all listed out and I gave it to Janice Lawson over there at Lincoln Trail, and she sent it back and said, "Take all of it off except for the flooring bid because that's all that you're gonna use that grant money for."
Well, my only caveat would be that when we say we're gonna cover the cost incurred over the amount, I'd like to add up to 9,900. But this is open-ended. Would you be okay?
Yes, you may. On the, on the resolution?
It's a resolution. That, that would still fly as far as the grant?
Or I could even put 20,000 on the resolution, but on the grant money, you only put 9,900 off. I had it, and I did so there was no confusion with the state when they looked at it. I took the 20,000 off and put 9,900, 'cause she asked me to.
I understand all that.
Okay.
But this says we will cover, that the Barstown, city of Barstown will cover any cost incurred over the amount of the area development fund allocation. And if I'm gonna approve this, I would rather, I would like to put a cap on it of 9,900. But that's my suggestion to the council.
Okay, that's fine.
Up to the previously approved amount? Because didn't we approve the amount?
We approved 20,000.
20,000.
Up to the previously approved amount?
Whatever, as long as we put a cap.
Right, up to the previous. Yes, that's fine, that's true.
Which begs the next question, we can talk about that later. You said it's, you said it's 23,000.
Yeah, 23,000, that includes the grant, the 3,000 from the grant and the 20,000 that the city has approved would be 22,000.
Yeah. All right, so we'll, I'll just redo this resolution?
Um, yeah.
And I'll just, I'll redo it and get back to you.
You would approve it as amended?
Yeah, I could just, I could make a...
It's a resolution.
Yeah, I can make a motion to approve the resolution with the caveat that we say to cover the costs incurred over the amount of the area development fund allocation up to the amount previously approved by the city council.
Now, second. Now, doing, and in doing this, you guys are gonna have to come by City Hall and sign this.
No, I have it right here. Or you have to put them.
She has it there. Will that, will that... We have to sign the amended one. Yes. Not this one, but you, she's gonna read it with the amendment that's in it, and then you gotta come to City Hall and sign this, 'cause I think you need to get this rolling.
Yes, sir. I made a motion before you, before you read it.
I know. He made a motion.
But that's all right.
I'm gonna read you the ad-its.
Okay. All right, Kathy, we're out of order then. Yeah, we're way out of order, but that's okay.
R-2016-01 Resolution, the City Council of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby resolve as follows. Whereas the city of Barstown has applied for area development funds in the amount of $3,674.29 to be used toward the cost of remodeling the first floor of the city of Barstown Education Center Cobec Building located at 219 East Muir Avenue. This project will cost $9,900. The city of Barstown will use the entire ADF allocations of $3,674.29 toward the Cobec remodeling project. Now, therefore being resolved, that the city of Barstown will utilize the funds from the general fund for fiscal year 2015-16 to cover any cost incurred over the amount of the area development fund allocation.
Up to the previous.
Well, then I'll...
Now.
All right, now Fred, I'm making a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2016-01 with the added statement that, to the amount of area development fund allocation, up to the amount previously approved by the city council.
You, and...
I second it. Okay. Discussion, go.
Yeah, what, and I think that you could, it's possible that you could make the motion to approve it as written with the understanding that, and then you hold Greg accountable if they do something more. I mean, you wouldn't be...
What percentage? What is a simple resolution?
Well, that'll get us with the signature tonight. The only thing is, is that, that understand that by resolution, you're not going to, over this resolution, in my opinion, does not override the previous action.
That, that's true. That's right. This is a resolution and that was a, you know, so that was a miniscule.
But, but I think it's appropriate, if you wanna amend your motion, to say that it is with the understanding...
To say that I'm gonna, I'm making a motion to approve with the understanding that the overall cost do not exceed the amount previously approved by the city council.
Okay.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. So that, that'll be passed around for everybody to, to sign. The other one is, will be the mobile food vendor special permit, White Castle, Prairie Mobile. People have been missing that for some time, so that'll be on 2/4, February 24th, 2016, and I'll entertain a motion for that special permit. Motion by Bobby Simpson. Second by Bill Budman. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion's adopted. Thank you, I'll get that done there. We've done had council member comments. Cemetery deeds, there's none. Announcements of recognizing individuals and thank them for their years of service, which will be Dramo...
A-Fable.
A-Fable, okay. Waterplate, 15 years. Crystal Sherlock, the leader department, 15 years. And James Boney Fultz, Public Works, 20 years. That's pretty good. If there's no objections, I'll adopt a motion by unanimous consent to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Rush?